I'd like to call to order the work session. This is Monday, July 6, 2015. We are not all around the table as I look here. Councilor Tanna will not be here this evening and so we'll be excusing her in the regular meeting. I think Councilwoman Campbell is coming. I have not heard anything. Have we heard anything? All right, so I'm just going to assume she's caught in traffic somewhere. So let's just go ahead with the agenda items. We have two tonight, so we're going to start out with 3.1 first. And that will be the presentation, we're looking forward to this by the way, of Superintendent Dennis Runyon. And he will give an update on the state of the Aguafria Union High School District and will also discuss potential issues and policies impacting the City of Goodyear's public, private, and community education partners. Dr. Runyon?
Thank you, thank you. It's wonderful to be here this evening and if you just relax and we have a wonderful presentation for you. It's just about 10 minutes long and then I've left five minutes for any questions or any discussions you might like to have. I do have some guests here. I have our board president, Ms. Maxine Hill, is joining us tonight. Also, I have Ms. Sandy Hayflick. She's our Executive Director for Accountability. That wonderful, wonderful annual report that you have in front of you is basically her baby, let's call it that. And she works very hard on that. It's produced in-house, so we appreciate that. Our new Executive Director for Educational Services and our former principal at Aguafria High School, Dr. Benz, is also here tonight. So again, we want to say thank you. They can also answer any questions you might have. So we'll move straight into the presentation for you this evening. If we may go to the next slide. Just a reminder, friendly reminder to you that...
No, sir.
Oh, go ahead. Just a friendly reminder, I think many of you know this, that we serve about approximately 7,500 students in four comprehensive high schools and one online alternative center. And our summer program this year, which is part of the alternative center, served over 600 students this summer, which was a record for your community and we're very excited about that. Fully accredited by Advanced Ed, and we can continue there. This is an interesting stat that many of you may not know, just something to share tonight, but 48.3% of our students... Oh, go ahead and say it. Sorry. I'm not used to that.
Well, listen to me tell you. I was supposed to introduce Lauren, so she'd come up and introduce you.
Okay.
So don't apologize about standing up and not sitting down.
No, this is nice. This is how we do our work studies.
This is how I do it sometimes, too. So we're equal.
No, thank you. 48.3% of our students have taken honors, either AP, that's Advanced Placement, or IB, that's your international baccalaureate classes, compared to 36% nationally. I think that's very significant for your community and for the progress of your students, so we appreciate that. We have a full complement of over 28 career and technical education programs. Many of you are familiar with that as well. That's a growing component. CTE is a very important part of the educational services in your community. This is a wonderful picture. This is your Millennium graduates this year. We're taking this from the stage, but I just want to share that we do have a partnership with the Goodyear Police Department as well as the City of Goodyear Parks and Recreation and using that facility for all four of our graduations. This is the first year that all four of the graduations were held there. And that's Tammy Gersett, the principal presiding over this year's graduation class. First time in our school history, over 500 graduates from Millennium High School alone. And we had over 1,200 graduates in total across the district. So the ballpark was packed, as you can see there.
Dr. Runyon?
Yes.
In between this, council may have a question off and on, so just so we know that.
Absolutely, and I'll also be able to answer questions at the end as well.
And I'll just make a comment.
Sure.
That's a magnificent slide. I must have shown that to so many people in the last 24 hours, the use of the stadium, how wonderful that was.
It really is.
Total, great story.
Yeah, and it's such a great partnership and we appreciate that. We were having difficulty at our graduations at the schools. We couldn't fit everybody. We're having minor fender benders. We're having issues with traffic and everybody's helped out there. And again, we thank the Goodyear Police for the wonderful work they do at those events. This is really neat. I wanted to take a unique approach this evening with the first time and first opportunity to be with you. I hope this will be an annual event for us. But I just, I love Dr. Seuss. I'll go back to my elementary days and, you know, you always wonder. You hear things about the budget and politics and the difficulties and the state of funding in education and particularly in Arizona at times. But here's something you can hang your hat on. Here's some of the things that your students have done recently. And these are just a slice, just a slice from the last few years. You've had over $15 million in unduplicated scholarship offers for your students. Unduplicated means that they're not, it's a student didn't get three and we're adding all three. It's actually the one that they used. And that's at all four high schools. That's a significant amount of scholarship money generated by the community. Scholarship offers to over 38 different universities and community colleges, just a sample, all across the country, including in-state institutions. Harvard, Princeton, Stanford, we've had a number of students going just all over the country. And multiple students with perfect SAT math scores. Most years, we have more than one, which is really wonderful. Multiple military appointments for the Army, Navy, Air Force academies. We've had significant, some years we've had up to four appointments across the district. Film student, this is a wonderful story. This happens to be a student from Verado High School, but she received, she's one of two students in the world that received the Milagro Scholarship, which is a $170,000 scholarship. And she attends currently the Santa Fe Institute of Film and she works directly with Robert Redford. And he's actually selected her for this award. And she's been, she graduated about two years ago. Second round selection in Major League Baseball draft this year. I thought you'd like that because we host the teams. And Gates Millennium Scholar from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Here's some, just additional national merit finalists, semifinals. These are your top students in the nation. Multiple ASU, NAU, and U of A majors in STEM fields of study. Again, this is a growing area of need in the state of Arizona, again, with, if you're looking at science and technology and engineering fields. And for another night, but we have a lot of work to do in the state to get more students involved in STEM. And I know at the elementary levels, there's also initiatives to do this, so. First completer, graduate from the CTE Aviation Certification Program that happened recently. That's housed in Glendale, but it's part of your CTE program. Two former graduates currently playing professional athletics. One, I know, is with the Minnesota Vikings and he graduated from Aguafria High School. He was just, he just received some accolades. I can't keep up with all of it, but many of you may remember also, Carrick Felix was drafted by the Cleveland Cavaliers a couple of years ago. He currently plays in the D-League, but he did play a year in the NBA. State leaders in the FFA program. Joanne, that's for you.
Oh, thank you.
Your daughter is involved in that. We appreciate her...
Two more this year from Millennium, yes.
Yep, two more this year. But there's a real strong core there at both, both your schools with your ag programs, both Desert Edge and Millennium. Six district graduates who came home to teach in our district. I always think it's important to hear and to know that, because we do offer those courses, we do help grow our own. And we have six teachers currently in the district. There might be more, but that's what I was able to locate. This is Desert Edge Group from the STEM Expo, wonderful kids. I know, Joanne, we've talked about doing some of the things with the science, technology, maybe having some kind of a spring event at the ballpark. This is, you know, the, from that group that we've talked about at your Great Schools Conference. And this is an example of what we could bring to that event if you'd like to do something. And I know that'll be talked about in the future. But just another example, here's some wonderful kids from Desert Edge, which is a Goodyear school. So this is a very important slide and again, this is all available on the district website. If you want more detail, there's a lot of information. There's a full demographic study of our area and the growth. I don't have to tell you guys, you know very well how fast we're growing. This is an example here of our growth over the last, since I think 2001. And our retention rate for the schools, your public school retention rate is very healthy. We retain about 90, or I should say 83% of the students in the state is about 70%, depending on how charters work and how your schools are set up. But we anticipate after 18 years of continuous growth, we continue this to, we see this continuing into the future. And what I'm trying to say is your retention rate in the West Valley is higher than the state of Arizona. We're about 7% higher in retention in your public schools than across the state of Arizona on average. And I guess the compliment to you there is that you have a very healthy public school system and it's well-received by your community. So that we're proud of that and we're excited about that. This is a tri-district workshop we held. We were looking, I don't know if you know, but it's been, it was four and a half years between the time that we built Desert Edge High School and then Verado High School. It's now been almost 10 years. It'll be 12 years and we haven't built a high school. So your growth has been tremendous. If you look at that demographic study, you'll see that Millennium is pushing about 2,300 students. Verado is scheduled to have over 4,000 students within the next seven to 10 years. That's double, over double their capacity. So we're up against it. I know for those of you that were able to attend the tri-district meeting, we had a lot of business partners there. We talked about a lot of things and needs. But just for your purposes this evening and the short time we have, we are at a point in our community where we do need to look at high school five and we have to figure out what that might look like and what the community might support. And again, I have to be careful, obviously. I'm not a, I can't represent the pack or I can't be involved in that conversation. I can only share facts. So tonight I have a few things for you if we go to the next slide. We are seeking a bond this fall. We are going to go out, we're looking at high school five. Normally, historically, the state of Arizona prior to 2009 was assisting in the development and cost of startups for schools. Last year, they did help with one elementary school, which was the first school that the state contributed back into since 2009. So as I show you these numbers tonight, if the state were contributing or if the SFB did help fund this, we could reduce some of these numbers. Our concern is that the state's position has not been to do that for the schools since 2009. So we're kind of in that catch-22 area as far as our planning and our thinking about this. I think the biggest thing tonight, I'm trying to share with you, is that it's been a decade since you last looked at a high school. Goodyear would be the location of a fifth high school. So if it's helpful to you, our demographic studies show that the needs are within the boundaries of Goodyear. So if that's a question or something came up. So currently, the bonding capacity for the community would be $70 million available. We do understand from our demographic studies and our community studies that it's important for each of our high schools to have some opportunity for capital investment. So in this plan, we have $10 million for that, for deferred maintenance and campus improvements. I think you're aware from some of the things you've read that 85% of the capital has been removed from the budget. So we don't have a good way to maintain our campuses, so we're looking at some of the possibilities around that. If you look at the phased construction there, there's a land acquisition improvements. We have three properties that we're looking at. I haven't been too public about that. We didn't want the prices to go through the roof if we can avoid that. But again, I can share that with you in the very near future, but they are in Goodyear. Phase one would be 40 million, phase two would be 10 million. That would build the core of a comprehensive high school. It comes out, too, if it's helpful for the community, and we did, we ran this through our attorneys, but it comes out to $1.86. I guess they took the average cost of a home, it was $169,000. It's $1.86 a week to the taxpayers in order to support this fully. If that helps and you can do the math there...
I think we just got an average just recently.
Yeah.
It was like 171,2 or something like that.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact amount, but it was in the 170s.
It's a little bit higher than that, yeah.
Yeah, and I, the one thing I'd like to stress in this, and I'll close on the bond piece, is that we try very, very, very hard to only do this because we're up against the need to do this. We're not, we're not out just seeking this. It's something that we've delayed and delayed and we don't want to have split sessions. Our understanding of our community is they don't want mega high schools. The goal was not to have schools that we couldn't sustain, the infrastructure around them. I think your officers here in the Goodyear Police can tell you about the traffic issues we've had at some of our schools. And so I, you know, again, as your superintendent, I appreciate that you build your high schools at the right size to be supported and successful. A 1,600-student high school, a 2,000-student high school is manageable. It is something you can be proud of. If you get up to 3,000, 4,000 students per campus, you start to run into some real problems. And I, you know, again, I know there are districts that do that, but if you study it carefully, there's a lot of issues that come with that when you're trying to service all students. So that's where we're at on that. And again, if the state were to be of a position that they could contribute, we would definitely be able to bring some of these figures down. The only other thing on that is that, you know, historically, the state did have a program, the SFB was for that, but it's not, it's not currently active. We do qualify, we have gone to the state, we do meet the criteria for the future planning for high school five. Sometimes you'll hear that, oh, the state's flat or they're not growing. You know, Goodyear is not that way. We are the exception to the growth factor and it's very visible. And that's exciting. I mean, that's good for you, that's good for the community, and that's good for your Recruiting and retaining quality staff, I'll close with this. We care dearly about our staff. We have 750 employees that work, many of them live here in Goodyear, many of them serve in the community and eat at the restaurants and use the businesses in our community. Our students developed a short recruiting video along with our teachers in our media classes, and I'd like to play that for you. It's just about two minutes long. It's the first time we've gone after this, but we're so excited and just to see the quality of the work that your students are doing in high school. I hope you enjoy this and it should come up here, I think, if we play.
Phoenix, Arizona. The sixth-largest metro area in the United States.
Can we turn up the volume on this, please?
The Aguafria High School District is located on the west side of this growing metropolis. We are close enough to enjoy all the amenities of the great city of Phoenix. If you enjoy exceptional dining, access to the four major sports, or quality entertainment, it's all just around the corner. Combine the career you've always wanted with the mild winter climates that are offered here in the Valley of the Sun. The Aguafria District offers a comprehensive high school experience for students and families, featuring the use of instructional technologies, the latest in blended curriculum opportunities, and flexible scheduling focused on 21st-century learning needs. Strategically placed in the competitive world of education, Aguafria has a vision for the Identified as a preferred district, as ranked by the State of Arizona Department of Education, we offer competitive salaries and a supportive working environment. Our 15 years of continuous student growth translates into job opportunities and security for professional educators and administrators.
Honor first, winner loose.
One Verado.
We are Desert Edge.
This is Millennium.
I am college-ready.
The Aguafria High School District. Excellence in education.
So I hope, I hope tonight, in the short time we've had, there's been some interesting things. And if you have any further needs or questions, I'd be happy to answer. There's tons of information in your annual report there. That's our fourth annual report and we appreciate that. Again, it's done in-house to save costs. The only cost for that was the printing of the material. So again, we're so appreciative of our staff and all that they do to put these things together. And again, those kids are available if you ever need a video for your, for the city.
There you go.
So thank you.
Council? Councilman Joe?
Thank you, Dr. Runyon. Excellent presentation. I don't, you may be aware of it, I'm an adjunct professor. I teach accounting, finance, several universities, so I'm a firm believer that education is our future, high-quality education if we're going to compete in this global market. Question, a couple of questions. First question, and I think you covered it with the challenges with cost and et cetera, but if you can name the top three in understanding bond and those requirements facing the schools today to meet those goals, to make the students successful and to compete in this global economy, what would you, what would you say they are?
The top three issues. Number one is quality of teachers. We cannot afford to lose quality and to be supportive of our teachers. If there's one thing you take from tonight, it's that it's the one or not, it's the number one variable in terms of educational practice. Without quality teachers, we cannot be successful, period. And that's probably number one, and that's out in front. Number two would be to have a budget that is sustainable and you can plan around. And I think, you know, this, we're speaking common language here in terms of the things that you guys look at every day and your concerns. So when we talk about the budget and where the state is at in terms of its funding, it's got to be a conversation that we recognize that we're pretty much near the lower end as we speak. It's not, again, it's not something where we've been, I would call it fat or heavy or, it's something that we're working lean and we need to know how to do that in a way that we can manage together. And the last thing I would suggest that we consider is just the value. The slides I showed you about where our kids go, you know, the Dr. Seuss would say, I just think that if we as a community have a greater appreciation for what our kids are doing, the stories are there, they're prevalent and they're visible, and the kids are doing wonderful, wonderful things. And again, a secondary issue, just a sidebar issue to that, is the cost of college. When we say college and career-ready, I won't get into that tonight, but there is a gap. About 15 to 20% of your students that are college-ready can't go because of finances. It's not a matter of just, hey, I'm going to load up on loans, I'm, yeah, I'm going to go do this. But you do have about 20% of your college-ready students struggle dearly to find ways to go to college, so. But that's a sidebar, but those three would be the top.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because as a professor, some of my concerns, and I've shared them with some other superintendents, is some of the real-life educational courses. For example, in accounting, a lot of my students that come here, I've got to teach them how to do a bank reconciliation statement. Or when it comes to budgeting at entry level of, you know, my, some of my accounting classes, understanding how to do a budget, the value of performing budget, the value of saving, time value of money, those type of things. So I think those two, you know, even probably at the high school level, as you get into the seniors, et cetera, would also help them, you know, where even if they don't go into college, would help them avoid those traps of getting their credit run-up or understanding the value of budgeting money, or even valuing a balance, because nowadays it's all smart cards and ATMs, what's my balance?
Yeah.
And you always assume that what the bank's telling you is correct, but that's not always the case.
Yes.
So, but I appreciate this and anything that we can do to partner with you, because I'm a firm believer, if we, if we don't get the highest degree of education going, we won't compete in this global economy and it'd be all for naught. So education to me is the key, why we don't put more effort in it at some of the other levels. I don't understand that, but to me, that's the key for success.
Thank you.
Period.
Bill?
Dr. Runyon, thanks for the great presentation and I'm certainly not going to speak for Joanne, but as parents of graduates, and I think I'm the only one with a child left in the high school district, but it has been a great pleasure as a parent to have my children attend Millennium High School and see what they've become afterwards, so I appreciate that. I did have a question that I, over the weekend, we received from Litchfield Elementary School District, their little newspaper that had some of the similar financial data in it. And one of the thing, one of the things that we constantly hear, particularly out of the governor's office, is the amount of money that's being spent on administration versus in the classroom. And both you and Litchfield have done a really good job of breaking down the per pupil, et cetera. But the one common theme that I, that I saw is the cost of plant operations per square foot compared to the state averages.
Yeah, there's...
It's quite high.
Good, good question. Thank you. And your administrative costs, again, are, we are well below the state average and that's a healthy place to be. The operation costs, there's two things that work here for us. One is to look at our peer group. We did, I had Travis, our finance director, look at our peer group. Our peer group's very interesting. Many of the districts in our peer group, and that's about 10 other school districts, I think eight or nine of the districts have, are much smaller in physical size. You have, I think, 94 square miles to our school district. And so when you begin to think about operation costs, whether it's transportation, whether it has to do with building or cooling facilities, you're also looking at high school level. So you're looking at larger facilities that have longer use time into the evening, for example, or on the weekends, or with events or activities, youth leagues, things like that, churches. Most of our schools do host churches on the weekend. So it's those things that are happening that show a higher cost per square footage, but I think if we were able to break that down a little bit differently, you'd see that they're comparable. The other districts, in some cases, our peer groups are much smaller. Some of them are K-12 districts with seven, eight schools and their, their demographics, 14 miles, 12 miles. So for me, it's an apples-to-apples comparison and I don't know that our peer group is always apples-to-apples. It is, it is important, though. The other thing we have to note there is that we did add, after 22 years after the last bond, we did move in, we bought a bank-owned building for our new district office. It is in Avondale. That total square footage had to be added into that for air conditioning, for usage. It was, it was a large building in terms of the scope of that building. So that also, I think, impacted the, it was all of a sudden thrown into the mix. But I think it's the size of the district, it's the spread, it's the cost of transportation miles, it's the cost of energy use at a high school level is very different than an elementary level. Just the footprint of the facility is that way, but also the fact that we use it for so many different things. And again, those would be the things that come to mind.
You know, I think that it, I just found myself in that same trap. We do, we have this very conversation, why does it cost Goodyear more to provide X and fill-in-the-blank whatever that is compared to another city? And we are constantly talking about the sheer size of our community and the cost of services, et cetera. And here I am, a typical homeowner now, not paying attention to the size of my school district. So I appreciate the information because that certainly becomes a factor and as we start to move forward into bond discussions later in the year, it only helps us when we are out talking about that, so I appreciate the information.
And I, I think you guys are aware, we do have a significant solar program. Two of your buildings have complete solar arrays on the rooftops. That includes Desert Edge in the community. And then the other two have the solar arrays, which are parking lots and other common areas. But we've been involved in the solar piece for, I want to say, now, seven years. So it's been healthy and that's also brought us some opportunity for savings.
Joanne?
Well, thank you, Dr. Runyon. And I have to tell you that for our, for our city, you know, when you, when you think about the strength of its future, it's only going to be as good as the businesses it has and the education system that's here. And you are a huge part of that. You, the district, your staff, and Maxine, you and your board. I mean, the decisions that are made are very, very important. And granted, yes, I had a child, I swear, at Millennium for 10 years. And so I have seen the challenges and the changes that, you know, the school district has had. But it is, it is truly important. And I love the fact that your school district, and I'm sure that most high school districts do this, but you have to be diverse and you have to have something for everyone. Because we all know engineering and science and math, you know, STEM is so critical to the future. But you also, to keep that level of high schoolers to stay in school, that may not be their thing. be their thing. And the key thing is, is to get them to graduate high school, educate them and graduate. And so, if that means you have to have culinary, or you have to have art, drama, those are all extreme, FFA, those are the things that keep kids engaged. And, and I'm thankful that, that every one of your schools has a little something unique to itself that allows children to be able to have those opportunities. As for your teachers coming back, you know, it's kind of funny you said that, because I think Mr. Dockel, Millennium High School teacher, last year at the Millennium graduation, was, was touting Dr. Seuss. And, at, at the graduation, and the, this is so ironic, just yesterday, my daughter on Facebook put, you know, I was reading to my nephew, oh, the places you can go, and I got a tear in my eye because I thought of Mr. Dockel. And, you know, I think he's one of the teachers that came back, and that is so incredibly important. So, I thank all your teachers for everything they do. Going forward, you know, whatever the city can do, whatever any of us can do to partner, to help those kids graduate, I know that you, being on the mayor's roundtable, that is a key thing that you all talk about, is that, that graduation rate. And, you know, if there's ever any inventive or creative ideas, you know, let us hear about it, that help these kids take that trip to the future. And ask for a couple extra billion to get some kids to college, that I don't know that we can, that we can help you with, but, yeah, thank you so much.
You've had enough of that, haven't you?
Yeah.
Oh, it's costing me, I'll tell you.
I'm there too, by the way.
Yes.
Would anybody else like me? Molly?
Well, Dr. Runyon, thank you for your presentation. I have been asking for months and months and months for you to come and talk to us and tell us about our school system, but I want you to know that our city does value all of your students, and we know how outstanding they are. We have so many of them that have served on our youth commission, and they really are the shining light of the city, and we just so appreciate all of them. And it's hard, these days, to be a teenager. It's hard to get everything together. It's hard to study, it's hard to work. There's just so many distractions, but we hear such wonderful positive stories coming out of all of our schools in our city, and for that, we're very, very thankful. And we're thankful for your leadership and the leadership of all of your teachers, your principals, and especially your students, because they have bought into our city, and we do appreciate that very, very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Carolyn?
Well, I, I agree, of course, with everything my, my peers have said. I hold education very dear. I too have been there and done that with a couple of kids at the college at the same time. Great fun, great fun. But I, I, my comment is that I'm really pleased to see that the Awafria district is recognizing the value of the CTE program and the value of making those students career-ready. While it may not be in the, the higher education, it is nevertheless an important part of what, what holds the glue of, of society together, because not everybody can be an engineer and have our world function. So, I praise you, Maxine and board, as well as the leadership at Awafria that, to recognize that very, very important part and needed part of our system.
Thank you.
And Dr. Runyon, I think you're all, any others? Before I go, I echo all the comments that I made tonight, but I do have just one thing that I continually have said with the city, and I'm going to tell you with the school district. You have to get out and tell your story.
Yes.
The things you told us tonight need to be told, need to be printed in the press, if you can, print it somewhere, because there's a large group of people that believe the front page of papers. And I, I think I shared with you tonight about an article-
Yes.
-that was in the Arizona Republic by Americans for Prosperity, and it happened to be Tom Jenny, Arizona Director of American for Prosperity. And the statements he made in there was very unusual, because we didn't see in Arizona Republic fact, fast, a fact, fact check on it. So, when you read the article, and I know you're going to do that, you'll see what I'm talking about. We need to have a strong force out in the public talking about this, and we need to counteract this negative conversation and using comparisons at other states that don't have the problems we do, that don't have the diversity, and don't have the population growth that we're having. So, I just, all I emphasize again is that, got to get out there, we've got to have different ways of telling the story, so that we don't have all this negativity in the background.
Well, I concur and thank you again this evening, and you've helped us take one of the early steps on that journey by doing this tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question.
Do you have a speakers bureau between your board and yourself or staff, that there's so many places out just in here, that groups and clubs are always looking for speakers, that really, that should be something you guys think about, is pull, pull some of your people together and say, okay, you know, who's available next Thursday night to go talk to the-
To this group, and that-
You know, right, just kind of-
I appreciate that, we can grow there, yes.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Well, I will say some of the superintendents have been in our community, talking to different groups, especially during bonding time and so forth, and they did a very good job. It was small groups, but I, I was in a couple of those, and they did such a good job that they did turn some people in that small group around on their thinking process about it.
Yeah.
So, just let's build on it and do more of it.
Yeah. Well, again, thank you to Goodyear, and this is my 12th year in the community myself, and I've loved every minute, I've raised my family, and again, I just want to say, what a great progressive group and how much you're doing for the community and growth, and it's a great place to be in the West Valley, and that's for all of us, and, and thank you again this evening. Thank you for the opportunity, and help us recruit teachers, that would be appreciated. That's a real challenge in the state.
Well, and the final word, I think that we're doing more government partnering with the schools than ever before.
Yes.
So, we're kind of crossing that line that, you know, before was forbidden, so I see progress there, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And before we go on to number two, I do have to make apology to Lauren Valencia. Lauren, stand up, please. This is our assistant to the council. And I took her moment away. She was supposed to introduce Dr. Runyon, so I just want to know, she did all this work, was prepared, and then-
Pleasure, Howard.
You see what happened. So, next item will be an update from the staff on programming and activities of the library and the Innovation Hub that have occurred over the last fiscal years. Nathan Torres Parks and Recreation Director and Michelle Laurie, Economic Development Director, to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to tell a story, and it's a good story. It's about our library services, and joining me this evening is Ms. Erin McFarland. She's the Maricopa County Library Manager, that's assigned to our Goodyear library, and also Michelle Laurie, our Economic Development Director, who is overseeing the Innovation Hub. So, before we get started, I'd just like to provide you a brief update on, on our contract and partnership with, the incredible partnership we have with Maricopa County to provide library services for, for Goodyear. By way of our IGA, Maricopa County provides 100% of the funding and the operation for our library services. This will save Goodyear this, this current fiscal year nearly $600,000 that it takes to operate that library that's currently being run and operated by Maricopa County. Unfortunately, this IGA is scheduled to, to expire in June of 2017. And this model was put in place to, by the county, to help support smaller communities, specifically 50,000 and under-populations, by way of expanding library services into smaller communities and assisting with that effort. And the county has certainly done that for us, well beyond our, that 50,000 population. So, it's, it's definitely been a great relationship, and however it is scheduled to, that funding relationship is scheduled to, to be different after June 17, or June 2017. So, you know, that, that relationship, and we'll be doing a, a complete study and recommendation, but just at least wanted to, to let you know that in fiscal year 2018, that, that relationship could change in terms of funding. Obviously, we'd still, we think the county does a fantastic job and would like to keep that relationship intact, but we may have to start supporting some of that operation in the future years. But having said that, you know, we did open the new library in January of 2014, and we now have one full fiscal year to compare data to, and with that in mind, I'm going to turn things over to Erin and share all the good news and all, everything that's happening in, in the library.
Okay, thank you, I'm glad to be here tonight. I have these numbers here, and then, after, we sent these numbers in before the fiscal year actually ended, so I'm going to go over some of the newer numbers as well. So, we currently have 7,413 active customers. 3,600 of those were added during the fiscal year 2014, 2015. So, every day, it seems like we make a lot of library cards. I went on vacation for a week, and I had ordered cards before I left, and I came back, and they said, we're out of cards. And I said, how could that be? And I looked, and in two weeks, we had made over 200 cards.
Wow.
Just this summer. So, people still drive by and they're looking, and people love the library, and they come in to get cards every day. So, the number of people through the door and the circulation have both increased significantly. So, this is where, where I'm going to go over some other numbers as well. But as of the time that we sent this in, the increase from the fiscal year 2014 to fiscal year 15, our gate count, the number of people through the door, went up 15%. The circulation went up 26%, and our program attendance went up 66%. Now, if you look at that fiscal year 2014, half of that year was spent in the small branch, and half of that year was spent in the larger branch when we moved. So, because now we have a full fiscal year in the new branch, I'm able to compare that to the last full fiscal year in our small branch. And so, when you look at those numbers, our gate count, the number of people through the door has increased 43% since we were in the small branch. Circulation has gone up 63%. The programming attendance for youth has gone up 150% from when we were in that small branch. And so, that's a testament to the fact that we now have a room in which we can schedule these programs and have people come. Adult programs have also gone up by 91%. So, people are coming, and they're taking use of the library that you provided to them. Summer readings, summer reading this year runs June 1st to August 1st. We're excited tonight to have Jacob, Jacob is back here. Jacob, you want to raise your hand and say hi, there he's back there. Jacob is representing our summer readers that we have at the library this summer. So, last year, we had, at the end of the program last year, we had 1,221 readers registered there, and this program runs for children all the way up to adults. We have Jacob here, and there might be other people, if there are, you can raise your hand as well, that are in the city, that are doing the summer reading program, what, Councilwoman Campbell is doing the summer reading program, I'm doing the summer reading program. So, you can get free food and a free book by doing the summer reading program. When I sent this in, we had 1,217 people registered. At current date today, we had 1,475 people are registered for this program. And of those people, we've read 340,835 minutes so far this summer, so we still have about a month of the program left. So, it's very successful, we've had great luck, so I want to thank Jacob for coming tonight and representing our summer readers at the library. So, the two, the numbers to date, the library program attendance, we had, as this number was sent in, we had 1,272 people attend programs at the library this, in the month of June. At the end of the month of June, we had over 2,000 people who had attended programs. If you've tried to park on that side of the complex on a Tuesday or Thursday morning, you might think that, yes, there are that many summer readers as the parking spaces close up in the mornings. But the summer reading program has been very successful, and the city of Goodyear, the Goodyear branch, is one of the only branches last year that actually increased the number of participants for the summer reading program, so we're excited for that. I wanted to mention, we also have a library program called Stay and Play that won a national award. It won a National Association of Counties Achievement Award for Innovation in Library Programming. We're excited about this program because it highlights partnerships, and the library is strong through its community partnerships. The Toy Brary, we partner with Taking Turns Toy Brary, which is a nonprofit in the city that's run by an occupational therapist, and the occupational therapist, the Toy Brary, brings toys to this program. It's for families with children ages zero to five, and those toys are available for checkout, they're all developmentally appropriate. The occupational therapist has three car garages full of stuff and thought, what am I going to do with this stuff? So, she started this nonprofit, which is a fabulous opportunity for our parents to be able to check out these toys and bring them home. And so, not only are we helping, you know, forward the mission of the nonprofit, provide these toys to parents, we're introducing parents to the importance of unstructured play with their children, but then also, once the Toy Brary's over, the toys that aren't checked out, also any toys that have been returned, are then brought to one of the local high schools, which I think Dr. Runyon has left, that have vocational programs, and those students clean those toys for us. We're also providing vocational opportunities for special needs students in the high schools. So, this is a really cool program that we have going on. It happens every other Friday during the school year, and right now in the summer, we're offering it every Friday morning. So, that's really exciting. But again, just highlighting those partnerships, we have 13 partnerships with different agencies in the area, and that does not include Goodyear city departments or schools. So, we really work hard to reach out and bring those agencies in and, and help to use their resources and offer them our resources. The Friends of the Library are very important to us. Councilmember Campbell is the president of the Friends of the Library, and we're very lucky to have them raising money for us. During this last fiscal year, they provided over $1,700 for use for programs. So, they raise money for us, and they give that money back to the library in the form of programming funds. And so, we couldn't really have all the programs that we have at the library without some of these funds from the Friends. So, they provide a really important service to the library, and Councilmember Campbell has been very active in working to build up that Friends membership and working to help fundraise, so we're very grateful for her work and for the work of the Friends in providing those materials for us. And that's everything. I am happy to answer questions, and I can also hand it over to Michelle, she's going to talk about the Innovation Hub, so.
Questions, any comments? Well, it's, I'll make a comment before we go on to economic development. It's terrific, it's just terrific, the numbers, and it's really nice to know and be able to say, because there were naysayers on us bringing in a library, because nobody goes to libraries, and that's what kept her, nobody goes to libraries there. If they have a computer, they might do the computer, but they won't do anything else. Well, we've proven wrong in, in Goodyear, so.
Lots of people come to libraries, so, yeah.
That's really good news, and that's another good news story to get out, so thank you very much.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me.
Yes, Michelle, you're off to the fore.
Well, it's great to be here, and to be here with Erin. I would be remiss in not saying what a great partner she has been for the Innovation Hub and for the library, and you generally don't think of the library and economic development together, or you might not, but you should. And so, she's been wonderful, and we really are lucky to have her and to have the rest of the staff, you know, they're part of our customer service. So, when we have people coming in to do anything, but even to look at the Innovation Hub and to check out things, they're very much part of the customer service, and we're just very fortunate to have you, so thank you, thank you, yeah. So, there's the pictures, the pictures of the Innovation Hub, and I was also going to say, you know, if you, if you haven't been over there to the public or to anyone who's listening, you know, it's great to go over there, it's, it's wonderful. We have walk-in hours, and I've been privileged since Jessie Peterson, who really was, you know, who really born this program with economic development, has since left the city on June 19th, but she was really so close to it, but I've gotten the opportunity, I've been taking it over since she's been gone, and I've gotten the opportunity, and it's really fun to go over and just to see everybody, and if you, you know, to change your day, you know, just walk over, it's, it's great. So, it's a great partnership with economic development to be there at the Innovation Hub. So, I'm just going to go a little bit into the numbers and the details of the Innovation Hub. It's been a full year since economic development has come to you and give a presentation, so just for your information and for that of the public, wanted to give you some information about how it started. So, February of 2014, the Goodyear City Council approved a license agreement formalizing the partnership between the city of Goodyear and ASU, and that was for the 1,000 square feet in the library, for free business development services, also ASU startup resources for innovators and entrepreneurs on a daily basis, and also access to practical academic classes, both online and in the library, provided for ASU. And how does it work? So, the Innovation Hub is open to all members of the public and provides users with access to free ASU startup classes, one-on-one mentoring, business-related books and magazines, free Wi-Fi, as well as meeting room space and open space that provides opportunities to collaborate with others. So, what's happening at the Innovation Hub? Over the last year, staff has worked hard to identify services that would best serve the community through the Innovation Hub, and through this process, we worked to add and improve the offerings that were, that were being had. One example is the SCORE mentoring that was offered at the Innovation Hub. SCORE is a national nonprofit organization that's- SCORE is a national nonprofit organization that's dedicated to mentoring entrepreneurs and small businesses. Previously, SCORE mentoring in our community was only available during business hours on weekdays at the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce. But with the library being open for full days on Saturdays, staff worked with SCORE to propose offering mentoring on the Saturdays at the Innovation Hub. And starting in May of 2014, SCORE mentor Jay Gladney has been offering SCORE mentoring appointments at the Innovation Hub on Saturday afternoons. And the response from the community has been very positive. Jay's been great and we thank him for his service. And I'll show you some data in just a second on that, so you can see. An additional opportunity that more recently was fostered came from actually a local entrepreneur who attended the city-hosted Small Business Summit in 2014. And after attending the summit and learning more about the Innovation Hub, his name's Mark Cato. He contacted us, reached out to staff and offered to donate his time mentoring at the Innovation Hub. And that's just begun. He has an extensive background in all things computer and tech and he has recently completed the necessary steps to become a city volunteer. And he's now available for in-person and online mentoring. It's on our website, to ask Cato is his email, but he's great. We're meeting on Friday to talk about things we meet regularly, but really, really helpful. Another resource previously mentioned is the ASU Rapid Startup School classes that are offered at the Innovation Hub. And previously, these classes were offered at various times on weekdays, but staff recognized that attendance varied significantly depending on the day and the time.
Yes. So Michelle, on this is, are they giving classes on how to start a business, I would assume anywhere, but is there a point where someone, if it's that teacher or not, can actually help these entrepreneurs know what it would actually take in Goodyear?
Yes. That's where we come in. That's the perfect.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's where we come in. So that's the perfect segment there and that's why we're involved with everyone who's coming in and doing that.
Wonderful. Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. So the ASU Rapid Startup School classes that are offered at the Innovation Hub, we, when we resumed those classes in May, staff did a trial for Saturday class time to determine if it worked better with the community and it definitely did. It's been the most consistently attended and you'll see those numbers kind of spike up as we started that in May. So that's on that. So how's it going? The Innovation Hub webpage on developgoodyearaz.com has a continual increase in hits and it's been 980 since the start of the fiscal year, which is great. It's way up from our economic development website that had been on the city page, so it's, it's great. So that's 980 hits on the Innovation Hub page. Over 100 people have been added to the Innovation Hub distribution list used to promote upcoming programming. So that's kind of our network. We have a next meeting that I'll talk about in a little bit, comes up this Saturday, July 11th. We send that out, it's 100 people. It's people who have indicated interest, people who we've sought out on LinkedIn, small businesses. There are also people who help us promote the programs, like the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce, it's been in the Verado Newsletter, all kinds of things. So that's our, kind of our network of people who help us spread it out. But since the beginning of fiscal year 2015, there have been 350-plus signed-in visitors, walk-ins and event attendees, more than 70 hours of free SCORE mentoring offered. And I was just going to pause really quickly, Laney, and show this chart that I have, just to show you a little bit more information. Sorry, this is the first time I've used Elmo, so don't laugh. Let's see her. Is that, that's not going to do it, is it?
No.
There we go. Oh, there, okay. Thanks, Councilmember Stipp. Okay, there we go. So that, that is pretty familiar to you, I think, from the monthly pipelines that we show councils, that the city manager shows council and just shows kind of the chart. And it's very interesting. So that's the fiscal year. As you can see from May, that was our, that was our most frequented month, that we had people calling and coming in and doing things 48. And then it's interesting, as the summer, it started to kind of slow down a little bit. But one of those things that made May so special was the start of the Saturday classes. And that's what, there were two classes on Saturdays and that's what really started it. And then, you know, just with the summertime kind of, I've talked to ASU and I've talked to the SCORE mentors and they say, "Yeah, the summertime's a little bit of the doldrums, but we still have people, you know, coming in, but just, you know, not as many people in the area." So, but Robert Eto and I actually, in the Economic Development Department, just met today with someone who's going through the program, a business owner in the Southwest Valley, who's going through the program and, you know, she's enjoying it very much. And so she was saying, you know, it's also, the Saturday programs also are kind of a series. So when you start, the same people come, they come sometimes, they don't come some of the other times, but you can also start new. So it's really great because the mentor is able to kind of blend it to who's there. So I'll go ahead.
Joanne?
So if I'm not mistaken, I have heard that we have roughly 1,200, maybe that number's off, but 1,200 home-based businesses.
Right.
In Goodyear. Do we reach out to them to help, you know, pinpoint to those, that group of businesses to help, you know?
Yes. And this one we met with today actually is a home-based business. And it's, it's good to reach out too to Goodyear, but also to the, to the Southwest Valley as well, even just to offer Goodyear businesses help too, but there's so many in the Southwest Valley that are able to do that. And as we'll talk a little bit more, are able to give their services to the people who are coming. So they're able to network, exactly, I think, the point you're making, is they're able to network and really get together and say, "How does this work for you?"
And that's what I hear is, is something that we really need to help them come together on because, you know, unless they're with the chamber, it's difficult sometimes for them to know where their fellow peers are hanging out or doing things and, you know, that's the hub, I suppose. But that's what they need to know is, you want to come here, so.
Exactly. Okay, thank you. Do you have anything to add to that, Erin? Please interrupt whenever you do.
No, you're fine. Okay.
So let's talk a little bit about the status of the agreement with ASU. So in the summer of 2014, there was a reorganization that took place within ASU's Entrepreneurship and Innovation Group. The previous staff that had been part of the project's inception were reassigned and so a new team came on and new representatives were put in place. As a result of the reorg, ASU began to significantly limit its office, offering of classes and resources. In the fall of 2014, they took the opportunity to reevaluate the initial Alexandria program, which was temporarily, temporarily suspended classes during the holiday season. In the spring of 2015, with the new staff in place, ASU renamed the Alexandria Project, which is now known as the Entrepreneurship Outreach Network, or AEON.
Better name.
Did you like that better?
Well, no, that tells a story.
Yeah, that tells, yeah, it's.
Everybody's saying, "What's the Alexandria program?"
Exactly.
And you go back in a little Greek mythology, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, this, this really tells the student.
Exactly. So currently, the city has an agreement with ASU for five years. It's four years is remaining on that agreement. After the reorg and the introduction of AEON, ASU met with staff and shared their intentions to kind of move away from the agreement at the end of this calendar year and change the focus to a facilitated model of programming that would require each AEON member, and that's each of the networks of the cities that are in the agreement, to provide facilitators to deliver ASU's course content. So they would give you the material basically, but then they would give you training, but you would need the facilitators to go ahead and facilitate it. The current agreement doesn't have any penalties for termination by the city or by ASU. So when they shared their future intentions and direction with staff, staff, and I think Erin was there too, met with them and kind of said, "Well, you know, that's concerning to us and we'd like to, you know, continue that commitment as the, the community's really been positively receiving the curriculum." So ASU agreed to resume those classes for the obligations under the current agreement through the end of this calendar year. So through the end of December, it's really through their next semester. So as that ends, so will this, this agreement will change. So while the change in direction was not really anticipated or desired by staff, we're still working closely with ASU to continue providing upcoming programming and additional access to opportunities through the Innovation Hub.
I'll just, I just wanted to add one thing about what ASU, one other thing that ASU has done with, through our relationship with the Innovation Hub, they had a library grant, they got a library grant, to provide CodeCamp classes to teens in the community. So we are offering at the library in next week, starting next week, so July 13th through the 24th, coding camp to teens in the community. We accepted teens on an application basis. We have 25 spots available, we had 86 applications. So you can see that this is really something that the community is interested in, so the library plans to offer more programs like this as the fall comes on. But they're providing, an ASU graduate student is going to teach this CodeCamp and it's four hours a day and it's free of charge, which is a great opportunity for students in the West Valley. So that was just something else that ASU was providing to that that I hadn't mentioned. So.
Yeah, well, that's okay. It's your thing.
I jumped, I jumped the ball, sorry.
No, that's okay. No, it's your program. No, thank you for bringing that up. And yeah, and I think that, you know, it's changed and they've done the reorg and it's changed a little bit, but we're working with them. They're still a great partner to be able to facilitate this with us and offer their course programming, so they're still a great partner.
Do we have any volunteers in the, in the community who would want to help entrepreneurs?
We do, sure.
Because.
We do.
Sure, there are a number.
We do, and as Mark Cato was one of those and some of the other folks who are really...
How are you reaching out to the community?
So, you know, it's funny, a lot of them are reaching out to us, but what, so when we started, so I've really started being kind of the program manager on the Innovation Hub, starting in June, when Jessie had to go. And so I've been able to really get a lot of people contacting me, wanting to do that and having, wanting to have, you know, be able to teach. And also, you know, it's something for them to do. We say, "Hey, you know, you need to come in and things need to be free, but you can explain to people your businesses and that sort of thing." So we've given them, you know, and we're going to give them an opportunity to do that. And we've done it in the past when ASU was, had temporarily suspended. Some folks came in and talked about marketing and different things. So it's, it's worked.
Have we reached out to the high schools at all? Because, you know, in this day and age, the teenagers are becoming entrepreneurs and they're inventing things and doing quite well with selling it. And so we're doing that also.
Great idea. We will absolutely, we have not yet.
Okay. Joanne?
Well, you know, a couple of ways that I see that all working together. Actually, it could be twofold, that they're the ones, they're entrepreneurs, but they could also be teaching some of the, some of the social media type of issues for business owners that don't quite get that yet. But, you know, reaching out for mentors that can be master's classes, you know, I mean, we have a great community of people that are retired from outstanding careers that could also be some of these, these mentors that, you know, sometimes you just have to start knocking on the doors and find out who's out there. And I really think that if we could come together to help that, you know, I know you guys will figure out what's going to happen with ASU, but I would imagine that there's some ways that we can easily use the people that we have here to do some of that. And I think it'll be great.
Bill?
As this gets ready to sunset at the end of the year, it's just, do we envision that this is going to remain an Innovation Hub? Do we think it's going to change?
No, we, it's going to, the vision is that it's going to remain the Innovation Hub and really, we need to do that as part of, you know, it's interesting, as an economic developer and looking at this, it's not a traditional thing and maybe city manager can, can point to some things on that in his experience, but it's not a traditional thing for economic developer to do. It's very new for, you know.
Innovative?
It's innovative. It's, but, you know, it has to have a lasting power and consistency to meet something and we have to, really, we're learning that we have to create that ecosystem for smaller companies and for ideas to generate. And so a lot of it, it's funny, a lot of it is easy to quantify, you know, you've got this many hits and this many, a lot of it's qualitative and it's building relationships, just like economic development is, it's building relationships and doing that sort of thing toward, toward an end. So, you know, and we envision this to be really important and to be one of those things where we continue the ASU programming and we might augment that programming with some of the things that we're thinking of doing. So I think we really mix, mix the two together, but it's absolutely something to continue as a priority as the Innovation Hub.
And it'll stay under the direction of economic development?
Yes. That is, that is my understanding, so.
Okay, thanks.
I know that when I toured last year and the year before, a number of Innovation Hubs, it really was partnerships of a number of people meeting every, and Saturdays were filled with all of them. And so they sort of shared their ideas and shared their contacts and it was really quite exciting. And on the other side of the valley is some really busy ones and very active, and I think we can get there. Joe?
Do we have any stats, since it's been started, any seeds have been kind of nurtured and actually resulted in some type of entrepreneur business that's, that's flourished or has begun inside the city of Goodyear?
You know, I don't, and I think that we're probably right now just planting those seeds and really helping them grow. We have several people that we work with on a continual basis and that come in all of the time and that we're really working with on that. We don't have any, I'd say that'd be a grand slam, we don't have any really that yet, but I think that's, it's a long-term proposition and it's really keeping, feeding it, going, growing is really going to take efforts.
No, and I appreciate that, but it would be nice to see the efforts and the results.
Sure. Well, you know, one thing that we could come to you with in the future is kind of, here are the people that we work with on a consistent basis and here's the businesses they have. But, you know, part of it has always been that, you know, we try to get them to sign in and we try to get them to, but a lot of them don't want to do that. They, they like the separateness of the city, so we fight that too. But absolutely, we will, we will work on getting that information for you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Really add to that is if we could just get a tech center. I toured several of those and that's where the equipment is there, so they have the idea, they go in, you know, and they develop their widget and then they work on the business side of it. It's just, it's so exciting and so, just need a warehouse to do something like that in, so.
And a little, few dollars, I'm sure.
A little few dollars, so. Ollie?
Well, I was going to say, Michelle, I'm in the library a lot, sometimes two and three times a day. And I have, I always go to the Innovation Hub and tuck myself in the corner so I can look at my book real quick to see if this was really the book that I ordered. And I've talked to a lot of folks just sitting around and they have not signed in, which is interesting. And I see the same people again and what they're doing, they're using our internet and they're talking to people that are just sitting around or they're reading the magazines and the newspapers that we have there for them. And a couple of them told me that they had a business idea, but what they needed to learn was what all they had to do to register the name, to go to the Corporation Commission, to do this, to do this. And they weren't ready to tell anyone what they were doing because it was such a closed secret, but they, they really loved coming to our Innovation Hub because they could find people that would share what they did and how they did it. And I have been there, I've really, truthfully, never seen it totally empty. There's always someone in the chairs or in the actual little meeting room. And they really love it, they really, really do. And, and they have said that it's just a hidden jewel of Goodyear and they hope a lot of people don't find out about it.
Oh, they do, okay.
But, but they really do. Yeah, they really do. So I just wanted to let you know, the chairs aren't very comfortable though, sorry, Erin. No, they're not very comfortable, you know, they don't make you want.
I didn't make the chairs.
I know you didn't. But we were laughing at it because you put your computer on it and then you've got your magazines and whatever and you just can't quite maneuver it. But it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful service for folks.
And just so, you know, I wanted to just remember something that Councilmember Stipp said, just to remember to, to circle back, is that, you know, I'm doing the Innovation Hub right now. It's, it's something, it's been really good for me to, to do that. It's something, it's been really good for me to do that, and, but we do want to make sure it remains a priority, so the new project manager that's going to replace Jessie will have that as a tenant of their, they're going to be doing that, so just to make sure it's always keeps that place.
Well, and I think that it's important for the public and I think for the council that we continually measure it.
Yes.
And so when we have somebody on board that's able to do that, then we can substantiate, you know, the success of the event. Yeah, I'm sorry, Charlamagne, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
That's okay, I just wanted to say, make a comment, as I see these three people at the table up here. Each one of you, in your way, in a very impressive way, I might add, have been innovative, no, no pun intended, creative, and been such an amazing asset to what we're trying to do in Goodyear to make us more functional, more of an asset for anybody who is in ours, within our city. And I think that needs to be recognized because all three of you are outstanding examples of what creativity means.
Any other comments? And where are you, Michelle? Now we have.
Okay, no, that's okay, we just have a couple more things, and I'll go really quickly. But we just wanted to tell you a little bit about what's next, and that is the next Saturday's, this coming Saturday's class, that's coming up at the Innovation Hub. We also have the Team Coding Camp, really popular, and that's really popular all over the valley right now. I know a lot of different hubs are doing that, and it's really great. So that's that. Additional focus programming, so what we talked about before is kind of getting more people involved, one-on-one mentoring opportunities, the volunteer mentors. And then we also have an opportunity for, to host the ASU Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Meeting in the fall. I attended one of those conferences, and it was really cool to get everybody together in one place, so that would be really exciting, we're pursuing that. So I wanted to let you know that was there.
So, Michelle, tell us what coding is.
So, oh boy, you're asking the wrong person, you really are.
Okay, Erin, tell us what coding is.
Well, they're going to create apps, and it's a browser-based system, but the information, what they've based it on, my understanding, again, this is like, like Michelle, this is not my forte, but it's a browser-based system that teaches kids to code to make an app. And so the whole idea is that by the end of the camp, they will have an app that they can then go and sell if they so choose. So, but it's based on the AP Computer Programming and Computer Science classes that someone will be able to take in high school, so. And it's, like I said, a great opportunity for teens in our area, because people pay for these classes or pay for the camp in the East Valley, they go to ASU Polytechnic Campus, and they, and if you stay, it can cost upwards of $1,000. And so this is offered for free to the teens in our area. So, I think it really is a great opportunity for these kids to have a chance to do this on this side of town and not have to drive all the way across town.
I attended Avondale School District, and I had a meeting one night with the school and young students, and these were elementary school students. And I sat at a table while these young students code, you say coded, however, and actually made that apps, and it was just fascinating. And they got from the table and went up forth the microphone and demonstrated, so, yes, it's very important, so.
Also popular are our robot classes. The kids love it. I mean, we have 150 kids in a room trying to build robots, it's just amazing.
You mean at the library?
Yes, oh, yes, at your library. I stuck my head in, there was no room.
Yeah, at our summer programs especially, there has been a lot of room.
It's amazing, yeah, so we, we're pretty fortunate.
Just wanted to thank you and thank the partners, it's been great to be with you, yeah.
Thank you.
Nathan, do you have anything?
No.